And I'm still trying to look for it so I can send it to you too.
Yeah, I can see it. Yes ma'am. Let me read this. You and Mr. Nevares have got it.
We honor the law.
Ah, it's about the king.
King?
King of the...
Who are you talking to? Miss Honorable, right here. It's because I got that in the mail.
Yeah.
And they sent it to the Honorable. And my secretary told us to...
How do you know it was you? Maybe he was the Honorable.
Well, no, no.
No, it wasn't addressed to me.
Oh, never mind.
He tossed it because they've never seen us. They said, yes, we have a son in Columbia City. And he's like... Yes, he went as to what? He went as to... Right.
Eight forty-one, we're now in regular session. Item number thirty. Discussion on action to direct staff on creating an ordinance that will require a background check for any person who purchases a firearm at a gun show held in the city of Socorro.
Make a motion to postpone.
Second.
And El Dorado?
Aye.
Mr. Nevares, success, to Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia, yes.
Item number thirty-one. Discussion on action to appoint Miguel Martinez to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Duran?
I'd like to delete this item. It turns out that he is not able to.
Second.
What, um, what position would that...
Planning and zoning.
I don't know, I don't know. But, uh, for your district? I don't know, I'll tell you why. Praveer Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares, success, to Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia, yes.
Item number thirty-two. Discussion on action to direct staff to compensate effective immediately all volunteer-appointed board members for the city of Socorro, Texas, to exclude city council members. Do we have motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
So, um, I had, um, asked, um, our staff to send me a list of all our, our commissions and boards that are not, well, the whole thing. We have many commissions that have not started because we don't have the personnel. And some of you are missing board members as well. I have heard, since I've been here, uh, the first thing they ask me is how much does it pay? And I said, nothing, but you get to vote on important issues for your city. You get to be involved. That's one. Two, we have a lot of our boards that are not, uh, coming to, or commissioners and elected of, uh, uh, board members, uh, that don't come to the meetings, um, because there's no quorum. It costs money to the city to, every single time we, um, announce these meetings in the newspaper. Why not insen- give incentives, um, to all our board members? There, a lot of our board members take it very seriously and they take a lot of time of, time from their personal lives to research what they're going to vote on. So, therefore, I'm asking, uh, to see if this will work, if we can get our, um, all our boards, uh, filled, because we need to.
Mr. Duran?
I've served on the Civil Service Commission for eight years. I never missed a single meeting. A lot of the other members also took it that seriously, too. I don't know if an incentive, then you're paying people to do their civic duty. I don't think we, we need to be paying them to do that. It's one meeting a month for civil service and then, right now, our civil service hasn't met in months because our city's doing the, the job right. And whereas, we were meeting sometimes twice a month because staff was not doing their job. Uh, right now, we have a very good staff. Civil Service doesn't have anything to do because everything's being done right. If people are not showing up to meetings, we need to remove them. And we need to find people who are going to take it seriously. And they're out there. They're out there, we just need to find them. I mean, Mr. Martinez was more than willing, but then it turns out that he's doing business with the city, so he can't. But there's other people and it, it just is a matter of finding them. That's all we need to do.
Ms. Ellos?
And you know what? I, 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 it's not paying them to come to meetings. You know, they, they, they take time from their busy lives. They use their own gas to get here. And then, uh, some of them get here and there's no meeting. You know? It's not a lot of money that we're, we're, you know, saying, I mean, we can even reduce the fee if we had to. But what we have right now is not working. You say that they're out there? I've been out there. I've, I ask all the time. Mr. Martinez, didn't I just recruit somebody at a meeting? I mean, not Mr. Martinez, I'm sorry. Mr. Medina, another senior moment. Mr. Medina, did, I, the meeting hadn't even start, well, it had started without me because I wasn't there, but soon as I saw this gentleman, I, I need to talk to you because I'm always trying to recruit. But the first thing they ask is how much do you pay?
I've never been asked that.
I have. I have. And it's pretty sad. It's pretty sad, but we need to fill these positions. And I'm trying to do something different. I don't know. We've talked about this before and a lot of you are missing a lot, including myself. My people have left or, or I haven't been able to, or we are not able to fill because we have one person wanting to join, but we need all three. So, we need to do something different. And, and so therefore, the next item that's coming up has to do with that as well.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I, um, there was a time where I would have agreed with you cold-heartedly because I did, I could be wrong, but I wanted to bring it up or I did bring it up. Two thousand, huh?
You would ask me about it.
I, I, of course I did. I don't know if I brought it up or not.
No, no, when, when I was serving, you came up and you asked me about that and I said, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and, and he was, he was a board, a commissioner. And he said, yeah, but he was, and I asked him, what would you feel about it? And he said, no, we shouldn't because it's, it's, it's a privilege. It's something that it, the constituency should be proud to serve in a board and, 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 uh, do it without any ill intention. And I remember vaguely the conversation because it was years ago, but I think he was like, maybe you will be tainted if you pay him. Maybe. I'm not saying you, you will, but it's, 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 now it's not a, a civil duty. It's more like, uh, more like an obligation now. And it's like, you don't want people like that. And, and, and I thought that, uh, that he was right on the, on, on, on the money, uh, Mr. Duran, when he told me that. And, and I guess that's why I changed my mind. I mean, if we're going to be paying somebody, I think we should be paying our police officers, you know, uh, instead of, you know, paying somebody that already comes to our, our, our board. If they don't work, then we replace them. It's just that simple. You know, we, we, there are people that want to come. I just don't want to say, Mr. Duran, I want to play somebody because you didn't, you know, because I don't want to step on his toes. Right? Or he doesn't want to step on, on, on Mr. Perez's toes. Or vice versa. You know, there are people. It's just that we have to put in our own individuals with our own different mindsets that believe in what we believe. But one of the things is, the issue is, some of us have to have other individuals that want to serve. We just don't want to come here and say, ah, well, I'm going to put them on your spot. Because it, it'll be unfair for, for another council member or the mayor's position, uh, that, and that's where we, if we're having trouble trying to find somebody, would it be okay to say, hey, if anybody else has somebody else, well...
I've done that.
And he's done that, too. And, and Mr. Perez, exactly.
We've all done it.
So I think, I think, I think that if there are some positions that, you know, just say, hey, Mr. Perez or, or, or Ms. Villalobos, or Mr. Duran, mayor, I got somebody, what do you think? You know, you can't fill it up, but I, I got somebody that's willing to do it. I, I think we should go that route and just have an open dialogue about, you know what, hey, I got somebody that I would want it, but I don't have space, what do you think? And if we do that, then let's, let's give it another go. You know, I, it's for the city. You know, I get it. I mean, I'm saying that if we're going to spend money, I'd rather just say, hey, we're talking about, you know, trying to find ways, let's give it to our police department. You know? I, 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 and, and that's, that's what I say. I could be wrong.
Yeah, I, I agree with him. I mean, we're talking about funding six more officers. And I think we, like I said, we need to tighten our belt. We need to look at how we're spending our money. And, uh, the volunteer board and commission members has been working since the city's was, has been here. Granted, yeah, we get people that leave and for whatever reasons. I think maybe what we probably could use is a little more direction from staff as to how many people we need. How many people do I need to appoint? And at what positions are they at? Just, you know, every so often, send us a, a little email saying, hey, you know, you need somebody on planning and zoning or, you know, your person resigned. Because a lot of times, they don't tell me who I resigned. So I don't know. And this way, if we have more dialogue, we can have, I think we can fill all the positions that we, that we have.
Ms. Ellos?
Mr. Villalobos?
Gentlemen. It really irks me that you guys are saying, we've done it like this for so many years. We are changing, we need to change. How much does it cost us to put the ad in the paper? Okay. So for, let's just say our, our board members, how much does it cost?
A zoning change.
No, to, to announce the meeting. Planning and zoning meeting or, you know...
Like, uh, at least two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty dollars. When there's no quorum, another two hundred. How many times? There's been times where planning and zoning has been canceled time after time. That's five hundred dollars already, right there. People are waiting out there. We need to change. And we need to change, I understand. So maybe, maybe, maybe you'll approve my next item because that's the item that talks about how to recruit, you know, for everyone, not just people who you know. It's for everyone. It's for everyone. So, if you guys don't believe in, in this just now, or might bring it back later, but we are paying a lot of money for these meetings not to happen. The newspaper loves us. So, let's not talk about we did it in the past because we are not the past, we are the future. We need to start filling these positions. Now, we do have, you have an updated, um, roster, right? Online, correct? Is it online? No, it's not on, I'm sorry, I thought it was online. But I got an upda- and I'm sorry, I thought it was attached to this. But, so you guys could see how many vacancies we do have.
We can send that to them.
Right. We have a lot of vacancies. We need to work on this because we don't have all these boards, yet we have approved them, but yet nothing has been done. And I include myself in it.
Mr. Perez?
Well, um, I, I don't agree with the, the compensation. And only because, um, it, it's, it goes against doing your civic duty and, and, and participating in, in government, for one. Two, I, in, I have been in camp, commissions since I was eighteen years old. At one point, I literally had the key to the city. I, I, there, I would open up the offices because you would have, uh, commission meetings. And the, I think what we need to look at is, and I don't know if you would agree with this, but look at the possibility of having, allowing commission members to serve on different commissions. Because it, we don't have a lot of, you're right, we don't have a lot of people that want to participate. But by the same token, um, I think that we can up our recruitment efforts in terms of, if we're going to have volunteers, we treat them very nicely. That's how, that's how you, 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 uh, you attract those volunteers. You, you have your banquet, you have, and, and yes, it might be a little cost, a little bit from the city's coffers, but if you're treated well, you'll want to participate. I, the fact of me, being paid to attend a meeting, I don't know. I don't get paid to attend a meeting and I'm here. So, I think that...
I, I think you guys lost the point. It's not that to attend the meeting.
No, 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 I, eh, no, no, but, but no, the thing is, but it, it'll boil down to that. That'll be the perception. That'll be the perception.
And we'll get everything done.
Well, I don't know.
We'll get it done. That's the important thing.
Because then, then you've got, you've got the idea of, yeah, then you have the idea of, are you ser- it's good that they serve, but the thing is that I would rather have somebody who served voluntarily and, and participate than, first of all, having it become a line item in, in the budget and then thinking, well, we have to, as, we have to forego this, to pay for, for the commissioners. I, I, I have a hard time reconciling that.
And, and I, I respect all of you. We can delete this item, hopefully you'll approve the other one. Um, and we can see what happens with the other one and if people sign up because we're out there requesting it, uh, where the whole public can view it, then maybe that's the way to go.
Mr. Duran?
I was on two boards. And never once, I mean, when Renee came to me and said, hey, uh, we want to pay you, I said, no. No. I mean, I, I remember the conversation very clearly. I do this because I want to do it. And that's the problem we have right now is people, they, you know, we, we, you put somebody in there that you don't know. And then they, they, oh, I'm on civil service. But they don't show up to the meetings. We also need to, in, in, also, in addition to the list of people that are lacking, we need to know how they are participating in the meetings. Are they showing up to the meetings? If they're not showing up to the meetings, it's up to us to replace them and get people that are going to show up. And I do agree with Mr. Perez. It was a great idea of having just single person on single, um, commissions and boards. But I think because of the fact that we are having problems filling them up, I think we need to go back to the two, that they can serve on two boards. I mean, it's, uh, like, if it's on civil service, they don't even meet anymore. So, I, I mean, putting them on, somebody on planning and zoning or, um, historical or ethics, you know, we can, we can fill all of them because there are people that want to serve. And, and I think that, I, I, I don't think paying them is, is the way to go. I think this is public service and they should do it because they want to do it, not because they're going to be paid. And I think it, you know, once again, we need to take that money and put it into our police department or any other, you know, services, needed services. And I think we can fill those spots if we actively go after people. You know, Mr. Martinez wasn't able to serve. I have somebody else in mind that I'm going to go after. And we'll meet with him tomorrow and hopefully we can have him for the next meeting. So, it's just a matter, and then, okay, we'll get to the next item. I'm done.
I, um, make a motion to delete the item. I resent my motion and I, to delete the item.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah, aye.
Yes. Item number thirty-three. Discussion on action to direct staff to order immediately and install at least five billboards through our city announcing the need for constituent volunteer-appointed board members. Announcement to include all commission titles, compensation pay, plus requirements.
Aside from, I'm sorry. Aside from that last statement because of what we just discussed, I think, um, we utilize the internet very well, but not everybody...
Need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to approve.
Second for discussion.
Ms. Ellos?
Okay. Aside from that last, um, statement, uh, or sentence, um, I think we should put some billboards out there. People read them very well. Not everybody has internet. Not everybody reads internet. I think we could, uh, entice, um, a lot of them to come over to the city and fill out an application and hopefully, um, get the volunteers that we need.
Mr. Duran?
I, I disagree with that. I think that you're going to get a lot of people just applying and we don't know them. I think we need to know their background. We need to know them to be able to put them on there. And as far as, uh, you know, oh, so-and-so applied, let's put them on there. We don't know who they are. We don't know what background they have. Mr. Martinez, I wish he could have served. He's served our city, um, several times, but because he has, and, and his background is in, is in construction. So he knows, he knows, um, you know, a lot of the, the rules and regulations. Uh, we need to find people for planning and zoning that have a architectural or engineering background so they can understand it. You just get somebody who drives a tractor, just because he applied and put them on planning and zoning, it's going to be a total, um, waste of time. And then, everybody else is going to get disillusioned and then they're going to quit coming to meetings. Because it's just everybody fighting. They need to understand what the position is. They need to understand what it entails and how much time it's going to take. And I think just by putting up billboards, that once again, that money should be poured, poured into our police department. I don't think we, we need to go a- we can do it on, online. We have a website. Not everybody does. But, uh, they can tell people, hey, if you know somebody, have them contact, you know, a city rep so they can, we can find out who they are. I just don't think a blanket approach is going to work.
Ms. Ellos?
I completely disagree with you as someone who puts up billboards all the time. And, um, I said, fill out applications, but there's a process after filling out the application. Just because they fill out an application does not mean that they get appointed. There's a process that we have to go through and, and maybe we might find some very good people in there, um, that we, I, you live here, you're from here, you've, were raised and born here. I wasn't. I moved here seventeen years ago. I don't know a lot of people. I really don't. Except, you know, I, I'm very talkative and I like to talk to everybody. And I ask people all the time. And the first thing they say, oh, no, for the city? No. That's the first thing I get. It's very, but I know there's people out there. I, and, and we have to find them. I hate the fact that you come here and co- cold-heartedly say that this will not work, et cetera, et cetera. Then find a way to, it works. Because our method right now is not working. And we have to find a method. And we have to find it quick. So, if you guys have a better suggestion, please bring it on.
Mr. Rodriguez?
For the record, I was not born here in Socorro. But for the record, I believe that I should have a pass because I married two women that were born and raised in Socorro.
Not at the same time.
Not at the same time, of course. But, I love the city. And I'm going to say something. You know, our commissioners are an extension of us, right? They should be. I had a very, very well-suited individual in planning and zoning by the name of Jose Landeros, which we know he, he's in, uh, El Paso County doing their, their whole structure for the county. And he, he left. You know, he, he, he's moving on. And, uh, and I had a very hard time to replace him. There was this person that, that always comes here and says, well, put me on. And the conversation is more like, no. Oh, well, why? And I don't sugarcoat anything. I said, you are not a fit. I'm going from the highest standard possible to somebody with no standards whatsoever. And I go, how can I give you the benefit of the doubt when you have district engineers from Texas dot coming and saying, this is our step-by-step? And you ridicule them and say, I don't believe on your methods? I don't believe on your data? So, my, my whole thing is, I will never put a person like that, that does not understand that the state statue rules over us and says, this is why the state is not allowing us to do, and yet you still fight it because you want it. Those are the type of people that we should not allow in our commissions because they need to understand, and every single commissioner needs to understand on every single board, is that we dictate. We say, this is the law by our ordinances, which they have to say, well, this is what this paper says. Does it meet all the requirements? Yes, okay, then, good day, and it's approved. Oh, it doesn't meet? Okay, no. We don't need a commissioner to be rogue and, and fight our staff and our commissioners to say, oh, no, well, I believe that it should have this and that. You're nobody to do that. You're here to abide by the standards and the ordinances that we put forward. If you have a different, uh, way of thinking, then bring it up to us and then we might accommodate and change ordinances. But until then, if, if people have that mentality, that's why it's very difficult to put, how could I put a farmer, a, and, and...
I'm a farmer.
Uh, no, no, but how to put a farmer into, uh, uh, to give me stuff for an architecture? Or why am I going to get a doctor to say, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna drive, you know, and fly planes? You know, those are the things that we're trying to do. We have to put people that are best suited for these, for these positions. It's very difficult for us because we understand, we understand that. We're not just going to plug people just because for the sake of just plugging them. Imagine, then nothing will get done. We have, we have one of the commissions that overrides us. If we say no, that board has all of the authority that state provides to say, we don't care what you say. It's what we say. And they're not even elected officials. So those are the things that we have to say. We need to put people that are going to understand where we're plugging them and why we're plugging them. I get it, we're under tremendous pressure to have these, these, uh, these commissions filled. There's people that want to just because they want to, but I mean, if they're not a fit, they're not a fit. You know, and like I said, if I have a vacancy, you guys have somebody, I'll vet them. I'll have a conversation with them. I have no problem with that. Okay? I, I'm, I'm open to all of that.
And I've done it.
And, of course, of course. So, so those are the things that we will work better at and stuff. And, um, and, uh, I'm just, I'm just saying that, is that we need to do our really due diligence on who we put as i- in our commissions because we need to, uh, move the city forward and not put somebody that is going to be rogue and that is going to want to just say, oh, me caio bien, like we hear it all the time. Which is true. Which is true. Okay? How are you going to give somebody and override the city?
Mr. Rodriguez, I'm going to stop you right there. You both are missing the point here. This is not about just putting whoever. There is a process...
You're on my time and, and I'll let you speak because I don't interrupt you. But, as I was saying, as I was saying, as I was saying...
Mr. Medina?
It's very hard. It's very hard and it's very difficult. What I'm trying to say is this, is that... Billboards are only going to attract people just for the sake of people. We're still going to have to vet them, but yet, what is it? What makes them? If we don't know them, what are we going to get? Yes, you can have a five-minute or a two-minute conversation or, or half an hour, but yet, you're not going to see the nature of what they are. And that's all I'm saying, is that it's, it's very difficult. It's very, very difficult to plug these people, especially if you're going to be inundated by a bunch of applications who, people just say, oh, well, there's a vacancy. And especially if we're going to pay for it. Of course, we're going to have everybody and their mothers here. You know, that's what's going to happen. You know? So it's, it's, it's something to look at and, and, and really do our work.
Ms. Ellos?
How dare you? How both of you dare that we don't have capable people that you don't know come here to the city and volunteer? Both of you, shame on you. There's plenty of people here that are smart. There's plenty of people that want to, but don't know. How do we get the information? That's what this item is about. It's not about you bringing in people that you know. It's about how we, we bring the community in here together and work together. A lot of them might not, might not want to go into our website or don't know our website or don't have internet, but they're smart people. They have, they had past jobs, they have jobs.[1780.66] They have, they had past jobs, they have jobs. They're capable of coming here and making a decision, uh, the, a correct decision for the city or a good decision for the city. We just have to find them. And we're, this is what this billboard would do. They're not that expensive. They're about forty bucks for a two-by-four. Forty bucks times five. We're not, I'm not, I wasn't asking for something uh, super expensive. And I don't know, but your words, both of you, I think you might have been violating the rights of, 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 I don't know, some kind of a right of people who live here. Maybe not, may, I might be wrong, but we have plenty of capable people. We gotta find them. You're saying here about say, about finding people or knowing people, well, good for you. I'm glad that both of you know a lot of people. I don't. I don't. But I know that the city has a lot of great, smart people and we need to find them.
Ms. Rodan?
You know, you take this personal. It's not personal. This is, uh, I mean, Mr. Martinez, I've known for probably, and the other Martinez, I've known for probably thirty years. I put Ernie Gomez on and I've known him for maybe forty years. So you have to know the people. You can't just because they're smart. I mean, when I left Board of Adjustments, they put one person on that would walk out of meetings in disgust because he didn't get his way. That's not the kind of people we need. And then you, excuse me, I have the floor. Thank you. Uh, that's not what we need. We need people who, who are going to take their job seriously. Not just because they're smart. I'm not saying there's not smart people in Socorro. We have a lot of smart people. But what we need is people who we can trust. And I'm not gonna trust anybody who just comes in and puts in an application. I'm not gonna trust them until I know them. So I mean, I, yeah, I do know a lot of people here. I went to Socorro High School. A lot of people that I went to high school, I wouldn't put on a board or commission. And a lot of them I would, saying, well, Mr. Rodriguez, he, uh, he hasn't lived here that long, but he still knows a lot of people. Mr. Perez, you know, you're seventy years old. I mean, you know, Mr. Jones or whatever it is, you know more people probably than all of us. Because you went to, I only went through high school. You went through grade school, kinder, pre-K.
No, I didn't.
Okay. But you know a lot of people. So if you know somebody, uh, and you wanna, you know, you can call me anytime and say, hey, I already have somebody on planning and zoning, but I know this person. I say, well, let's meet with them. Same that Mr. Rodriguez said. Let's meet with them. Let's talk to them. But I think the word needs to get out and I don't think billboards is, is going to, the way to do it. I think it's, it's gotta be on a personal one-to-one basis. We need to find people. And I'm seeing a few in here that I'm sure would love to serve. So.
Ms. Perez?
Um, and I appreciate the, the kind words, but I think that, I, I think what Ms. Colombia Loz is trying to say is that we need to provide for opportunities for the new generation to, to participate. And I think that, and, and the billboards are not a bad idea. Uh, I don't know about five, but certainly I think that it, it's a good way to, to get the message out. Um, I think that, and, and, and positions that I've had, I've had to hire people. You hire them based on the job application. Um, you don't know them, but you develop rapport with them. And so, um, I think it's a, I think it's a toss-up. You're, you're, you don't know what you're gonna get until they're actually in, in the position. I don't necessarily agree that they have to know about uh, human resources to be in civil service because it's a learning process. I don't necessarily think that they need to learn, have a, a working knowledge about engineering or construction to be in planning and zoning because those, those things can be learned. And, and those commissions operate under a certain set of rules and parameters. It's when they become rogue that it becomes our responsibility to call them out on it. And so I think that, where I'm going with this is that I think we need to not say that we need to get to know them on a one-to-one basis. Because I, I personally don't have the time to do that. I, I trust in the application. I need to trust in the application process in, in the time that, that I, and I, I do meet the, the, the people that I, that I put on a board. But I don't know how they will behave until they're actually in the situation, in that position. If they don't perform or they're not going or whatever the case may be, they go rogue, then it's up to me to say, you know what? Let's have a heart-to-heart, you know, and this is where I'm gonna, this is what I'm gonna be doing. I'm gonna take you off the commission because of this. I've seen the way, I, I, I've read the minutes. I've heard other people's, uh, witness how you're behaving and it's, it's not gonna cut it. So I'm gonna look for somebody else. And with that, we have that, that ability. Okay? So I think that, um, even without making this way too long because it's already gone too long. I think that I would concede having the, the, the billboard with the, with what's required. And again, I don't know about five, but certainly at least three. And, and then, um, and then see where the application pool leases. We may get tons, we may get nothing, and it, it all depends. But unless we cast the net, we won't know what we get. And I think that at that point, i- if we, if I see people from District Three that are interested, go over the, go over the, the application and if they're viable, give them a call and if they're not, well, they're not. And I think that that just will expand the participation because that's, I think that's where we're at at this point. We're at a point where the older generation, including myself, that were here when the city was reincorporated, are not interested in serving anymore. They're, they're, and they're thinking about retirement. They're thinking about doing other things. And so we need to bring in new, uh, new blood, fresh blood. And I think that's one of the reasons, one of the ways we can do it. Certainly, we can do it through social media and whatnot. But I think that we're at a point where we need to explore other avenues and I think that's a viable option. Not to pay, and we've already discussed that it won't be part of the, of the, of the billboard, but certainly, you know, you wanna serve? And I can, and, and, and I'm trying to be funny here. I can even see you as Uncle Sam saying, I want you on, on the billboard. Because you're sporting the beard, only because you're sporting the beard.
I'm not playing Santa Claus.
But anyway, I think that we should just at least give it a try. I, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Ms. Rodriguez?
You know, it, it's, it's, it's nothing personal, you know, I just, I, I'm not calling anybody out. You know, I've done it in the past. I was always guilty of that, but I've changed somewhat. Um, it, it's, it's nothing personal. It, it doesn't mean that, uh, that just because my views are, are different. It's just this item. It's not like we break rank every single item or every single meeting. I just don't want it to be like, uh, leave a sour taste in everybody's mouth. You know, I just want people to know that, you know what, look, maybe it passes, maybe it doesn't, but it, it we sh- we shouldn't be upset just because we have different points of view. I certainly argue and have disputes with Mr. Duran or, or with Ms. Villa Loz or with, with, uh, with Mr. Nevares or you know, Perez never, I, I don't recall, but you know, if there is, there is mayor, you know, so, um, like I said, but we, we get everything done. We get everything done. You know, I just, I just don't, don't, uh, want people to, you know, just to, 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 to be mad and say, oh, we can't work together. No, we, we're gonna work together, period, you know, um, this item, you know, just take it up for a vote.
Ms. Elos?
And real quick, I wasn't upset at anyone in here. I was upset with the wording. And, you know, that we don't have capable people in this city to, bec- just because we don't know them. And, and that is not true. We have capable people. And, and I was not upset at neither one of you. Uh, I was upset at, at the fact that I'm telling you there's a process that needs to be done. We're not gonna pick just anybody, but we're gonna get good cand- I'm sure we're gonna get good candidates, I would. And I just didn't see the fact that you guys weren't hearing that. You guys were hearing something else because you kept going into that direction.
Ms. Perez?
Would you amend your motion to three?
Three, that's fine. That's fine.
And, and before we proceed, Ms. Elos, I think you, to clarify, you don't mean a billboard like on the freeway. You mean like a sign? Like for the realtors use? Those are the ones that you just get printed out and place with?
The corrugated plastic.
There you go.
Right.
Ms. Arte?
Um, I saw it with my verification on the locations that you would want them placed and what would you want them to read?
Well, it says here, I mean, um, just, you know, that we need, we need you to serve, you know.
So now accepting applications to serve in your community or something catchy or?
I, I, I did.
Yeah, something because usually you don't want something busy, uh, because the big-
Correct, something that's just, uh,
Well, my, my initial was that you, we were gonna, if we passed this, you were gonna go back to your, you know, whoever does your artsy stuff and come back with us and say, this is what we came up with.
Oh, that's, that's.
Okay.
A proposal?
A proposal.
Yeah, I mean, what we can also do is, um, a lot of people come through our offices and we can give out flyers. Uh, if you wanna apply, that's something that, if that really doesn't get involved in, but we can definitely start.
How about having a poster?
Posting outside and.
How about having a poster in the office, in the lobby, also?
We can even have a picture of all of us saying you, you know, like Uncle Sam kind of thing. Maybe we'll dress up as Uncle Sam, all of us, and say, you know what?
I don't do good will, good wills.
Well, I'm just saying, but something where, where we accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Okay, so we'll come back with ideas and then.
Put a.
No, it's just this.
Oh.
This video.
Yeah?
Yes. Yes. Yes, our next meeting, please.
Henry Rodriguez?
Hi.
Ms. Nevares Asensio, how's it going?
No.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colompiano?
Yes.
Do we have, do we have time?
No.
No.
Oh, I passed? Oh, you did, yes.
Three.
Oh, okay, I got yours. I did hear you.
Item number thirty-five, discussion and action on charter amendment with an emphasis on Article Three, Section three point oh one through three point oh three. It's two pages, guys, come on.
But Ms. but Ms. R-
They're looking at me wanting to postpone and I'm telling them.
No, but Ms. R-
It's two pages.
And so this is a prime.
I think we just need to change, um, section three point oh one C to reflect the change in the term years.
Also B.
B and C.
B and C.
Oh, yeah, there you go. And also in the back, um, three point oh three D, I think you forgot to include the word year.
What?
Um, three point oh three D, one year.
One year? Yes.
That's good. That's right, David. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, not so bad.
Yeah, yeah, so just changing B and C, yeah, I don't know.
So can we go ahead and make a motion to?
Hold on, hold on, hang on.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I'm slow.
You've already said that twice today.
Sure.
Okay.
I don't have.
At least you were not as loud.
I'm like.
Hold on, hold on.
Ms. Arte?
We'll get it done.
Okay, so on section, on section B where it says that, um, one position shall be redrawn after each federal census. We wanna add May.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Which one is that one? I'm sorry.
On section three point zero one, B section, mid, where it says, um, council members shall be elected from single-member districts numbered one, two, three, and four, and one position shall be redrawn after each federal census. We wanna place, instead of shall, May.
It says if required.
I, yeah. But if you put shall, it's mandatory. And if you put May and it is required, you do not have to.
Shall be withdrawn, oh.
Instead of May.
Yeah, we just take out the required.
Withdrawn, okay.
So we are reducing the, the, um, the council tenure to three years?
No, it's four.
No, it's four years. That's why we need to make it.
Change.
Well, yeah, that's why.
Change it to what we currently are at.
This was, this was already there.
This is our current.
But that's right.
To reflect what.
That's what I'm saying, we're, we need to.
Reflect, mhm.
So B and C will have the four-year term.
That was done by ordinance and that goes back to the core warrant to lost city two thousand.
Twelve.
Twelve?
Mm-hmm.
So by ordinance and then by judicial turn. But we never, but the charter has changed since, so the charter's just wrong.
So we're going to update that.
I have, I have a question for you guys. Nowhere here, does it say, when do they take, uh, like, I know that when, when I ran, right, it, it was November? And then right after that, we had a council meeting and then you were in your position. Would you guys, I'm just saying, just like the president or county or Ocaso does it, is that when their election is, they take over in January? And the reason being is because they have to get acclimated to what we're gonna do, what they're gonna do? And then we can finish up and tie in whatever we have? Is that something that we, we wanna do or is just right there in there?
Like we're doing it, you know, you canvass the votes, everything's cool.
That's what I'm asking.
But, but then the problem is who's gonna serve during those months and then there'll be like a quorum or possibly with?
No, there won't be like a quorum. What it, what it, what it's saying is that, like, Ocaso is, once you get elected, right, you wait? I think it's like two months or so? Hold on, hold on. But what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, for that person to go and start talking to the reps there and says, look, this is what's on my board or this and that. I'm just saying, is that something we want to look at or we just leave it at the same? That's all I'm asking. Because it's December, it's November, December, and then January. So my whole thing is, what do you guys think?
Ms. Doran?
These are questions that I was asking.
No, I understand what you're saying, but if I remember correctly, when, uh, when I ran and won, um, there was no quorum at the meeting to swear us in. And Jim, you had to research and find out that didn't need a quorum to swear us in. So, I mean, a lot of times you lose and you don't wanna come to meetings anymore. So I think we need to just get in there. When somebody wins, throw them in, hit the, hit the, the ground running. And we're all here to help out.
The what?
We're all here to help out the new guy, you know? So.
Yeah.
Turned out.
Well, most of us are here. The old guys have turned out, you know. You can be on a board of commissioners.
Doesn't say anything about terms on this one, right?
Yeah, it does. Right here, they're gonna change it. B and C is gonna reflect the new four-year terms.
Can we che- I, I, I'm not throwing this out. Can we do, instead of two years, like we?
No, it's four-year term.
No, no, it's a, it's a, it's a two-term. Could we think about doing a three-term? And the reason being, I'm, I'm not saying just because I'm, I'm, I'm saying 'cause I'm, you know, I still have one more term if, if I choose to, alright? But what I'm saying is, look at the, I'm just saying, there are projects that we're putting in the NPO, right? Tigo Boulevard. We have, oh, uh, there's other projects that we already put there too for extensions. So my whole thing is. So my whole thing is, if you only have two, you won't see your projects get done. So, what I'm just saying is, would you guys wanna extend it instead of two terms to three terms?
Mister.
I mean, i- i- what we said earlier, we need to bring new blood in. You got the same blood with the same ideas, the same, if we bring in new blood, we have new ideas, that's, you know, we brought in the chief. We were gonna hire from within, we brought in new blood, he's got great ideas. So I think we need to leave it at two terms, if you can't get what you need done in eight years, you know, we need to um just uh leave things the way they are, and not not go into the the boss hog mentality of being there forever.
Ms. Villalobos?
It's very convenient on this part to bring young blood, but I agree that a lot of our projects don't get done, it's not because of us, it's because of all the red tape we have to go through. Maybe three years would be nice, maybe we can explore it, I mean, not three years, three terms, I apologize, maybe we can explore it to see our projects get done, because we lose a lot of money when our projects start and they s- they don't eh they don't finish. They don't get to the point where they need to go, and we've already spent a lot of money on them. That's that's one reason I would entertain a a three-term. Um and 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 again, it's not because of us, I'm sure it's not because of us, it's because of all the red tape we have to go through.
But the staff continues.
Yeah.
The staff continues, but the um the people that are here can change it.
Mm-hmm.
The people that sit here can change it.
Mm-hmm.
Let's look at the big picture, let's not look at the little picture, let's look at the big picture.
We're looking at the big picture.
The li-.
What it is is.
New new blood, nu- new blood, you're you're saying we need new blood, I I completely understand, but what's wrong with the project that that's already started? Because it wasn't your project, and somebody else wants to kill it, but it's a great project, let's look at that picture. Let's look at that picture, and let's not look at, uh, we've done this before, we done, I'm 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 big on new ideas, fresh ideas on, I've always been that way, I'm sorry, I I see, you know, if it's not working the way it is, let's let's find ways, you know, to make it work. You know, let's not sit here and and be our, you know, grandfathers and our, you know.
Mister Rodriguez?
You know, and and the reason, I I was told, because I had a conversation, the conversation led to what I'm asking you guys, is we need to entertain, and I would like to entertain it because of this. We're always crying, and that's what we're doing. Why is it that Horizon has all of this and we don't, right, Mister Perez? That's right, but we tend to forget how many times in how many years has Walter Miller been in Horizon? Okay, it's because of the tenure, and it's because he continues to get voted in, and because he's been there for more than ten years. You don't believe me, they just brought it up two councils ago, when we voted for the uh for uh to uh for him to be at the district appraisal. You saw all his accolades, you saw all his years in Horizon as a council member and mayor. So that's why it has grown, because the vision is the same, but because they have the people in there that continue looking at their projects move forward. Yes, I understand that sometimes, I mean, we have to understand when we're we're we say, that's it. I know when my cutoff time is. But there are so many things in Socorro that I would love to see, that we love to see, because I know that I bring stuff that you guys vote on and we pass, just like I do it to you guys, because the vision is still the same, but if you're gonna put somebody in, right, and that's what I'm saying, it's always good. But it's it's sometimes hard, because what happens if somebody comes in and says, I don't want that project? What happens if somebody comes in and says, I don't want Tigo Boulevard because it's too much money, or X, Y, and Z? What happens with the projects, I, you know, we've been fighting for uh Waco Tanks in two thousand and thirteen, we got it, then now the extension is already there. They already gave us funding for PE, right? I already put it implement on the T-Pak yesterday at at one thirty, I had the meeting. And we put it into the 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 uh the destino plan, so that we can continue it from Alameda all the way to the border highway east. You see, so those are the things that I'm trying to uh say, is that what happens if a council comes in, changes, and then that vision goes? And and what happens? So those are the things that we 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 cry, we, because that's what it is, we we want to have what what Horizon has, but yet if we say, oh, well, we're only gonna be termed out a certain amount, we know that these projects will, they will not come to fruition in two to three years. So we do have to do our due diligence, all I'm asking is, three terms, I'm not saying, let's do away with term limits, I'm not saying that. And in reality, we shouldn't, if it came down to it, because our term limits should be our residents to say, you're not cutting the mustard. I'm voting you out and getting somebody else, that is the true, true limit. You know, I'm not asking to to have no term limits, all I'm saying is, I I I seriously asking, what if we have a three-term? Because then we will see a bunch of projects fulfilled, we can still keep the city moving. I'm not saying me, like I said, I'm I, if I choose to, I still have one term, but I'm saying, what about the next people? You know, what if they're really good and we just give them an eight-year term if they get elected? But you see, the people are the ones that make that decision, not us, all we're saying is, what if we just change it, the people will decide. I'm just saying, let's just take it and 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 see where we go. Mister Nevades isn't here. But I spoke to him about that, and he liked that idea. You know, I wouldn't wanna do something and s- and and speak out a term, and I wouldn't wanna wanna say and make a decision without him, because it's a charter change. But one of the things is, if he was here, with the conversations I've had, you know, he 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 might like that idea, because of the conversations I've had. But that's what I'm trying to say, is that we need to entertain, so that, like Horizon, we can see our vision through. You know, that's all I'm saying.
Mister Perez?
Um, I think that it might be worth considering a a three consecutive terms, only because in terms of projects, everything takes at least at least three years, and that's just, even if it's to get engineering out of the way, or get your environmental out of the way, and all those things. I wouldn't, I I wouldn't, a- and there is, and it is a term limit, because it's three and that's it. Um, and if you're not doing a job, you're the, and I agree, the constituents will 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 elect you out, or vote you out, rather. So I I would be, I would entertain a a three-year term, but I wouldn't, it would have to be a full
Mm-hmm.
vote uh from the council, that, I I I wouldn't feel comfortable making any kind of changes at this point.
Yeah, without Mister Nevades.
Well, I think we need to reconsider when Mister Nevades is is here, and I agree with both of you, with the projects take a long time, and the three consecutive terms would alleviate that problem, but let's think of the other coin, whether the person that ups that is up here is not doing their job, their job. And I understand that you're saying, well, the constituents can vote them out, but the reality is that less than two percent of our constituents come out and vote. So we're leaving the decision of everyone to the two percent that come out and vote, and how many people actually come to the meetings? And how many people are actually active?
Ms. Villalobos?
I don't, you know, again, that mentality needs to go out the window. We don't need to say, we don't need to kill something good because of the bad. This is a good thing, it's a good thing to foresee our projects go through, so the city doesn't waste money, why would we stop something? We'll let the voters do the voting. We shouldn't be policing them at all, I I think this is, I didn't even consider it, it it sounds like a great idea. I mean, we have time to think about it and 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 uh and read up on it, but I do think that we need to start, we're we're over here saying, save money, well, let's save money by not having these projects started, and then get killed because somebody else up here comes with a different idea of how the city should go, eh when we've already spent all this money. And it's, we're not talking about a little bit of, we're talking about a lot of money. So, and and we'll let the people vote us in or out.
And ultimately, the, I'm sorry.
Mister Rodriguez?
Ultimately, I I just wanna stress this out, this is something that we're gonna take to the people.
The targets to be focused on.
And the people are gonna vote, and if they like what we said, hey, well, what do you think? Then they're gonna vote it, if not, they'll shut it down, so it's not like we're imposing our will, it's something that, hey, this is what I think. The reason why is because we always talk about Horizon, look at how their growth and all of the potential it has, it's because they're always there, because the vision is there. And and like I said, if they weren't doing a good job, the people won't vote for them. That's the bottom line, we talk about only two percent, but it's not true, because those are miscues, and I'm gonna say why, because in November, okay, five thousand, eight hundred and some came out to vote, that is not two percent of the fifteen thousand that that are registered to vote, okay? So that's like thirty-six percent, so on a non-election, yes, yes. So I can skew numbers the way I want to, but truth be told, they're they're getting higher. And with all these people coming in, it's going to be higher and higher every every election. So I'm just saying is, the people will decide, all we have to say is, look, people, you guys can vote us in, even if we do one term, they can vote you out. So it wouldn't matter if you have three terms or or unlimited terms. The people will make that decision, all we're saying is, don't tie our hands up to the residents to say, you know what, if you got somebody good. I've always said, Mister Perez is the smartest one of us all, I I've always said that.
So have I.
Okay, so he might not see it that way, but I truly believe, I I truly, I don't think I'm the smartest one in here, and 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 by any means, you know, I don't. But what I say is this, is that, why would you wanna get rid of people that actually are doing the good things? Because you're termed out, I think the people, I'm just saying is, just revisit it, say, a three-term, that'll be enough, so that you can get all your projects that we're doing as a city, because I believe that this council, believe it or not, I truly believe that we are doing a great service to our community, look, we just voted to add more police officers. Rep- Mister Duran agrees, all of us agree, that is great for our community, you know, look at what we did with with the with the uh ambulance service, the dog service, you know, all of that, those are great projects for our community, wouldn't our residents wanna keep us here, of course? But if we're bound by two terms, it's gonna be very difficult to keep those projects. That's all I'm saying. So we we're, we shouldn't take a dis- uh, it's, yeah, and then we'll just wait, but just think about that, and then when we come back next meeting, then we'll just make a decision.
Mister Perez?
Um, two things, uh, Jim, when the constituents vote on the charter, it's an all or nothing, right? It's the entire, or is it by sections? I can't remember.
Yeah, there there's actually some some law that addresses that, it's, it probably has to be by section, individual items.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and if you're doing, I mean, if it's a total it's a totally event of the charter, then could be a long ballot. But if you if you ever, if you've noticed, when we adopted, when city, when citizens adopted the current charter, they included in the proposal and in the ballot measure, said it's not feasible to do it in in separate sections. That's literally just obviously not true. It might be un- un- it might be cumbersome, it might not be practical, but that's what they said, and it went, you know, like, I mean, no one's ever challenged it, it went through, it's fine. Uh, but to be legally correct, unless it is not feasible for some reason, then it should be done in sections by subject.
Alright, and then, um, so I guess, can we do that then? Hold this off until, and have this discussion when Miss, when with.
Mister.
Nevades.
Nevades is here, and that way, we can.
Get a census.
Get a census, and then, but can we approve what's been recommended tonight, the other sections?
Yes.
That way they can get to work on it.
Alright.
We can say approved and then pending that section.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do that, because.
I I I I would, yeah.
Because it's late.
Yeah, because this is a big change, thi- this is a big change.
Yeah, that's, since, and it needs more discussion, and need, and more people to hear it.
So pending on the other, and then for the next one, I'll finish the article doing.
Alright, so is there a motion?
No.
Oh, we'll make up.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the recommended changes, uh, with the exceptions of section three point zero one, section subsection B. Is that correct, is that all that was, okay?
Second.
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. No.
No? Oh, there's.
Oh, yeah, motion to delete items thirty-six through thirty-eight?
Second.
Pedro Rodriguez?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Nine forty-six, meeting adjourned.
I am slightly tired. Nine forty-six.